Good morning. Welcome to the Utah County Board of Commissioners Board Meeting for today, May 29th. We appreciate your attendance today. We'd like to begin our meeting with a prayer reading or thought and a pledge of allegiance. We look to our audience, for those who might be willing to volunteer to participate. Are there any who'd offer their prayer reading or thought? Andrew, who give their prayer? Someone who'd be willing to lead us in the pledge? Thank you. Come to the podium, please state your name.
I'm Andrew Jackson. Dear Heavenly Father, we're thankful for this day. We're thankful for this memorial season when we can remember those who have fought to protect our country and the rights and liberties and freedoms which we have. And we pray that we will continue to fight to preserve our freedoms and to spread the joy of liberty across this world. We're thankful for this opportunity we have to meet to discuss the needs of the county and pray that I'll bless wisdom upon those who make decisions. We also pray that we'll always do what's right. And we say this in the name of our Son Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We'll now begin the process of building our consent agenda and our regular agenda. Currently, we have sixteen items on our consent agenda. I did have one request from staff that consent agenda item number one be stricken as the wrong list was uploaded there. So we needed to modify that. Were there any other items currently on consent that needed held for discussion?
Nope.
Okay, moving to our regular agenda items. Regular agenda items will be considered moved to consent unless held for consideration. Specifically, I had number four to be held for discussion. Number six to be continued till June 19th.
Number five as well.
Four to be held?
Held, yes.
Okay. And then seven held for discussion. And eight held for discussion. And that would be what I have.
If we, if we could, could we continue number 11 for two weeks?
Mm-hmm.
We're still trying to get some understandings in place with cities.
Cities, yes. So number 11 continued for two weeks. Okay, follow that, Renee. All right. Fantastic. Any additional's?
Commissioner?
Yes?
Yes, item seven on consent is approve or deny. So that would have to be, plus there should be a finding on that one. If you wait to read, there should be a finding, so.
Okay, so we will, on consent number seven, we will hold that for discussion then. Okay, all right. Well, we will go ahead then and move to consent agenda item number seven. This is to look at approve or denying a request to waive the rental fee for the cleaning deposit for the Military Academy graduation. Ben?
Ben Vanoy County Attorney's Office. I've been working with Don Naye from Public Works and we've recommended the approving the waiver, waiver of the rental fee, the full amount. It's a good cause and we want to support what they're doing over there, so.
Have any questions?
We'll make a motion that we approve the request as stated in number seven with a finding that it's in the best interest of, of the county to do so.
With the absence of a third commissioner today, I will suspend the rules for the remainder of the meeting, allowing me to second motions and second that motion for approval of consent agenda item number seven with findings. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion will carry two zero. All right, we'll now move into regular agenda item number four. This is to look at receiving the recommendations for the top three proposals for an RFP for Economic Development Consultants in Utah County. And look, staff, Roberts. Robert, if you could maybe just go ahead and give us a brief overview on this process and the recommendations.
Yes, there were, there were six, there were six proposals for the Economic Development Consultant. We, the recommendation committee narrowed that down to four and did interviews and presentations with those four. And then you have in front of you the three top recommendations ranked in order made by the committee.
Okay. Any questions?
Yeah, I had the opportunity to, to sit through almost all of the, the proposals as they came in and, and presented. And fantastic, you know, it's, it's, it's always hard to narrow, narrow things down. I think some of the consensus afterwards was, it'd be nice if we could pick and choose a little bit here and there out of, out of all the groups. But I know that the, the evaluation committee, you know, put a lot of effort into it, a lot, a lot more effort than I anticipated actually in doing calling and, and verifying all the way through. And so there, I know their number one recommendation to us, which was pretty unanimous all the way across the board, was the Advisors Consulting Services. And, and so with, with that, I'm, I'm ready to make a recommendation, or a.
Right. Sounds great. I had the opportunity to review and meet with the recommending panel and it was pretty obvious who they felt and I concur.
Okay. I, I will move that, that we, that we have received the recommendation of the top three and that we are selecting that there, we concur with them on the, on the number one with the advising consulting services as, as our Economic Development Consultant.
Okay. No, sorry, a second. So I have a motion in a second to receive the recommended proposal and begin further negotiations as stated in regular agenda item number four. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion will carry two zero. Thank you. All right. Number five is to look at approving property tax actions. Did hold this for discussion, Commissioner Lee. Questions on this one?
Yes. All right. We want to walk down through these? And do we, can we do them in chunks? Because there's some that are together. They all are about the same, but they're, but they're not and.
Do however you'd like.
Okay. The very first one is the DVD game exchange and, and I didn't have any problem with the recommendation on that one. The second one is Robert Lindsey Nelson, who has an address on there. The address on the deed has actually two addresses on there, two, 1274 and 1254. I believe we sent it to 1274. And, and they are, they are claiming that they did not receive that and therefore they're asking for the penalty and interest to be waived. Hundred and three dollars and ninety-eight dollars, correct, on those two numbers?
Sounds right.
From what I read on that, though, that has been corrected now, so we have the correct, correct address. And so I would feel comfortable in that one and waiving that, those penalties and interests on that one. Let's see, going to the, the Bowling Green LLC. Now, this one seemed, has, this one and Edward L. McKay, and McKay L. Platt, and the other Edward L., they're, they're abating. Has abatement on there and it's referring to, you know, a precedent that we had done in the, in the, in the past, looking at that, which, which of course I'm fine with. My concerns on that, though, was I'm trying to find on one of them, the 140670140 has on, on the summary to abate the twenty-seven dollars and nine cents, but down in the application it has to deny.
Okay, on all three of these, these are kind of a second request. So they made an, these are all three are kind of the same owner. It's, it's Linden Nursery, I believe.
Right.
And they had made a request to abate some tax back in December. And the board denied that. But it did take between the process, and I think there were some missed meetings. I think we canceled a couple of meetings and it got continued. So they were hit with a second penalty. And so in that, what you're referring to on the denial was the, that was the December denial. And so they're coming back now and saying, hey, we got hit with a second penalty, partly because the county took kind of a long time to make a decision on the first request. And so what I'm saying here, my recommendation is that we abate that second penalty.
Just that portion?
Yeah.
Is that, is that the reason why on the, on the next one where it says abate the hundred and eighty-eight dollars, but the, but the tax on that is showing five hundred and forty-six penalty, not tax, penalty and interest was five hundred and forty-six?
Yeah.
But the hundred and eighty-eight is from the timeframe, because apparently there was a, there was a conversation with the attorney's office and there was an under, a certain understanding. And I, and of course, conversations on phones are really hard to verify. I get that. But there was a conversation in which this property owner felt like things were going to be put on hold until it goes through a court, they said a court date.
Yeah, so evidently the property owner felt like it was on hold until that decision was made. That's not the way it works. Again, I don't know if that conversation was ever held or what, how that went. But, but at any rate, we did take kind of a long time to get that decision made. So my recommendation is to, is to abate that, that second penalty portion, but not the first part.
Right.
And that first part's already come before you back in, you know, back in December. So that's the basis of my recommendations.
They, and they agree to, they agree to that. They agree that they are late, because I don't see any challenge in that. I see the challenge being in after.
Right. You know, well, certainly they had requested the relief even before. I'm not sure that they would say that they're happy to pay that, but certainly this, this round is sort of based on the fact that we took a long time and she had an understanding that her taxes were on hold. Again, that's not how it works, but.
The penalty and interest is on hold.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. So on all three of those, my recommendation is to, is to provide an adjustment based on that second penalty only.
Okay. And that's why there's differences in.
Right.
In numbers. And, and so there's, there's an understanding that, that the abatement or deferral or, only comes from the commission office, right? We can't do that in, I mean, county attorney's office can't say, we're going to hold this.
Yeah. And I, again, my, our staff had that conversation and my gut feeling is that we didn't make that representation.
Yeah.
But nonetheless, they felt like that was made.
Okay. And that's fair enough. Okay. And then on the, let's see, Sundance one, I didn't have any question on that one. The John and Sarah Young, we have previously, we've, we've previously dealt with this similar circumstance in which they were paying on bill pay, but it got, it was like one day late. And so I feel, I feel confident in that one, for myself anyway, in abating that penalty, just the penalty and interest. I think it was, it was due on the 31st. It got, got here on the first bill pay thing, which we've done in the past. So this, this Lonnie Anderson one, I didn't see any request from the individual. It was referring back to, it was, it was on at the same time that we dealt with, that we dealt with another one back in April or whatever. But I didn't see any request from the individual. I saw, I saw a letter from, from staff.
Right. And I think, I think that this being reviewed based on the conversation that staff said she'd put it through again.
Okay. But she didn't put anything through. She didn't put anything through in the sense of a letter or, or understanding?
I have a letter here, I think was attached. So we have the old request attached to the new request. And the letter from the old request should have been attached to your materials.
Okay, hang on a second.
It's basically an address issue again.
Only letter I saw was a letter that looked like it came from staff.
There's a March 7th letter where she claims that there's a discrepancy between her address at 5534 and 5334. She says, prior to 2013, all assessment and tax notices were correctly sent to my mail by the Utah County Treasurer to the correct property address, 1534. Until then, the taxes were satisfied with the monthly mortgage payments. Since then, there has been no taxation notifications. Now, they received a notice of intent to sell the property, which I think was probably sent in conjunction with the May tax sale, with an address of 5334, which is an incorrect mailing address.
All right.
Again.
I don't have that. All I have is, I have the application. I have another one that says Mrs. Anderson came to, came to the office today to discuss. And then I have another one.
It might look on the materials as if it's a second request, but really it's just a copy of the previous request.
And then I see the, I see the quit claim deed and I see the warranty deed. Oh, I see, oh, that goes to another application. Is that what it is?
Yeah, but it's really just a copy, yeah.
All right. That was the confusion on that then.
I think we attached the warranty deed, which shows the 5334 address.
Yeah, I was viewing that as a separate issue, as there were two different applications on there. I wonder if we could hold that one so I could review it, because I was not seeing it through that, through those eyes. All right, the next one. You know, there's so much in this packet. It's so hard to go through the whole thing. If we would have had a Monday before today, I could have sat down with you and worked through it a little easier, I believe.
Right. So now we're on to the.
Jake and Sandra.
Sandra Smith.
Yeah.
So they're requesting relief here from previous years, because they've been paying taxes on their home as if it were not their primary residence. Primary residence, they receive a tax exemption and they had not been receiving that. And so they are asking for tax relief there. My recommendation is based, we have a pretty clear county code, county code 21-11, which states that you must submit an application to receive the primary residence exemption.
Okay. The next one, if I can get to it. It's the Harden one. Nope, that's the Smith one still.
This is, this is all historic.
Yeah, go through that one. So we had some, some parcel address updates.
Right. Yeah, again, this is kind of an address issue.
This one, you're abating penalty and interest? Are you proposing that? Okay.
Yeah, again, this is the US Postal Service had an address update that we didn't catch or, and it was, you know, a simple thing, like they changed the abbreviation of lane from LA to LN and it threw off the mail. So it was a post office change and so on. Yeah, the recommendation is to abate the penalty and interest that, that applied there.
What was the address on their warranty deed? We sent it to that?
I think we did, but because of the post office changed the way that, that they were identifying the addresses, it, I interfered with mail delivery.
Right, okay. Wow, that's a good application.
The next two are payment agreements.
Yep.
Kind of associated with the May tax sale and.
Yep, I'm fine with those. I'm trying to get to the.
And lastly, that brings us to.
When we continued?
Continued this last week. It's the Parish Chemical.
Right. We should just go to the bottom.
I know Chris Paulson has taken a look at that and.
Okay, let me get to the numbers on it.
Parish Chemical, as we reviewed it, as, as we all know, there was a fire involved. There was no adjustment for that fire over the course of a five-year period. So primarily what they're requesting is, and what we're recommending, is an adjustment be made to the taxes based on what would have been made if something had been adjusted at that time. The rest of it, we felt was insignificant adjustments. They were just minor compared to that. So it's based on a, I wouldn't call it a factual error. I don't know, Dave may, Mr. Shawkoff may disagree with that, but it could be classified as a factual error, but I don't think it is in that sense. But there was documented damage that was never adjusted for, that was later adjusted for when it was brought to our attention. But there was documented damage that was never adjusted for, that was later adjusted for when it was brought to our attention.
So I'm trying to, I find, I find the, the owing part and then the proposed part, wh- wh- so you've done adjustments? What, what section is that on?
There was a Board of Equalization adjustment five years after the event happened.
Right, that was the, now we're talking twenty, what was that?
About twenty thirteen, wasn't it?
Twenty, yep, twenty, twenty twelve? No? Twenty thirteen?
There's a significant adjustment in twenty thirteen.
Right. And so on the proposed ones that we have on there now, I mean, starting in two thousand and eight, you've got owing of seventeen thousand roughly, and proposed eight. And then, eh, my question last time was, if the twenty seventeen, in which we were saying is owing of eight thousand three hundred and thirty-three, and it's proposed to pay five thousand five hundred and eighty-six, if we've done the adjustment correctly on those things, and it looks like they, they match up in twenty, twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen's right on, twenty fifteen's right on, all of a sudden, twenty sixteen goes down according to the proposed. And so my question all along was, if, if that, if the, if the owing is correct on the years previously, how come now we're going different? And how do we go back from twenty thirteen back to twenty-eight? And, and do the, what was owing, what was proposed, and do the adjustments?
Uh, let me answer that in two parts, the two thousand eight to two thousand twelve, the requests is, they, and again, this is from the, uh, property owner. These requests. The request that they're proposing is based on an adjustment that was not made for the fire. Uh, the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen adjustments, we were increasing the value of the land and other aspects, which they are requesting that additional adjustment be made down from that, so the reason for the two adjustments are mutually exclusive of each other.
Okay.
But they are making a request for the twenty sixteen and seventeen to be adjusted.
You agree with those?
I don't have a problem with the complete package. I don't agree with small parts of it, but as a total, um, I don't have a problem with the requests as a, in aggregate.
Okay. But you, but you do on twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen? With that, with the, what is owing, what is?
Well, as, as we actually broke down the numbers on sixteen seventeen, um, we, we came to a conclusion, as we talked about it with the appraisers who were valuing it, that it wasn't as significant an issue, because we may be making up some on the proposed on the earlier years. And so, as I said, in aggregate, we all came to agreement that we were okay with it. Because as you know, in Board of Equalization, you can deviate, you know, five, ten percent in some areas. And so, that, that's what it really came down to, is, we, we could, we could move some numbers around, but we're primarily gonna get to the same place.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that you were, you were, I mean, these proposed ones are coming from a business standpoint, right, trying to say, this is what we'll pay. And I just want to make sure that you're comfortable that the numbers that are on that right-hand side are reflective of, of, of what it should be. That, that's, that's the concern.
And I appreciate that, um, and as I said, we could go through it line by line and come up with different numbers, but in the end, it's very, very close to the seventy-two thousand.
Okay. Okay, hopefully this will get that, this piece of property moved onward. Right, and not to us. Okay, thank you. Okay. I'm gonna go back here. Anything else? So I'll, I'll make a recommendation. Let's say silence. Make a recommendation that we, um, that we approve or abate, or, uh, everything that's mentioned in the, in the letters, in the, in the letter of recommendation here, uh, except for the ones, the Robert, Robert W. and Lindsay Nelson, that we abate. Let's see, that, yeah, that we abate the, uh, the penalty and interest on, on that one, which is thirty-five four oh one zero 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 two, parcel number. And that we abate the penalty and interest on the John and Sarah Young, the eighteen zero zero two zero zero six seven. That we hold the, the Lonnie Anderson parcel, forty-one four sixty-four zero zero three seven, for more discussion. And those were paying on the agreements. We accept the other ones. That's my, my motion.
Okay, I will second that, I have a motion in a second to approve the property tax actions, uh, as noted in the recommendation letter, with the noted changes to several of the recommendations. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion will carry two zero. Regular agenda item number six was continued. Next up will be regular agenda item number seven. This is to look at adopting or denying an ordinance, amendment Utah County Land Use Ordinance, uh, section six dash one and chapter seven, related to amendments for large-scale developments. Brandon.
All right, yeah, Brandon Larson, Community Development Staff. Um, always looking at trying to improve our, our ordinance, the land use ordinance and the, and the processes that we have for applications. Plat amendments have, have kind of been a little bit of a challenge, and we're seeing more of those, and so we're just trying to clean the, clean up the requirements a little bit, make sure that they're, they're working effectively. So what this proposal is doing is it's, right now in the land use ordinance, there are three, uh, it kind of talks about three different types of plat, uh, plat amendments, uh, amendments of unrecorded plats, amendments of conforming plats, and amendments of non-conforming plats, and we're, we're proposing to get rid of the, you know, the three different types, to just have one type of plat amendment. Uh, and with that, we would say that all plat amendments would meet today's, uh, standards. Uh, they'd have to conform to the current standards of the land use ordinance with the idea that they're only going to be held to the current standards as it relates, so, so if they're amending, uh, a road, so I've got a plat amendment right now, where essentially all they're doing is taking a, a new road, extending a road through the plat, that the only thing we'd be really looking at is the, the road, and if they're reconfiguring lots, we'd, we'd be looking at, at lot sizes and things like that, so we're, we're essentially just, a- as it says in the, in the amendment, it says, "Only those elements of the development proposed to be amended shall be considered in the plat amendment application and subject to current development standards." Another thing that this application would do is actually bring, uh, plat amendment application straight to the county commission for approval, uh, trying to, we're trying to speed up approval times. Uh, we did include some language that would allow you, this, this body to, to, to refer applications back to the planning commission if they deem that necessary. Um, the county commission, or the planning commission did recommend, um, that applications with road dedications and vacations, that those receive a recommendation, and so that's been included uh, in the ordinance. With, and, and with that, after we looked at the recommendation of the, of the planning commission, we found that it was, i- if you decide to take the recommendation to the planning commission, that it'd be necessary to
That's a, that's a may, right, not a shall.
Uh, a may, sorry, I didn't follow you, may for the, to send it to the planning commission? For road dedications and vacations? I think they, their language in the ordinance, modification must go before the, so their, their, their recommendation is a, is a they used the word must. I guess we could even change that to shall, but that, that's, that was their recommendation. And according to that recommendation, i- it appears there needs to be a change to chapter seven as well to, to facilitate that, to basically say that plat amendments, uh, with road dedications and vacations, um, that, that they, uh, must, that, that they need to, to go before the planning commission, so you gotta change not only to chapter six, but also to chapter seven to facilitate that.
So why wouldn't we want that as a may instead of a must?
Why would we want it as a may? Because that gives you more flexibility, I guess that, that, uh, kind of puts it back to where we, where we proposed it originally, that, that the decision to send it to the planning commission, uh, would be, would be your call rather than the recommendation to the planning commission, is that with debt road dedication and road va- vacations, it, it would autom, the land use ordinance says it'd automatically go to them.
Oh, without coming here for a recommendation?
Right.
Got it.
And for me, I liked the flexibility in the original language, simply because if we're, a- and again, the heart of this is to try and simplify the process and make it faster. So if we can look at a process, it's a really simple road, not very significant impact, then we can just go ahead and push it forward. If it's more of a major type of a road, it's a lot larger impact, we can go, we need the bigger look at this, let's send it to the planning commission, and that was why I liked the may type of the original verbiage there, just simply that flexibility, to me, kept us at the heart of the proposal, which is to streamline the process and make it easier, and give us that flexibility based on what's being asked, whether or not it should have to go through a longer process.
Sure.
Yep.
Okay, um, in, in addition to that, uh, we, we see a, we do see a benefit, uh, with, with requiring all plats to meet the current requirements. The reason, probably the biggest reason why is because that there are, over time, we feel that there have been improvements to the land use ordinance, for instance, um, I dare say the majority of our plats have, were probably done while there were twenty-five foot setbacks, and now there's a fifteen foot side and rear setback, and so, uh, an applicant can take advantage. And I, and I guess I need to back up to, to one important point, so right now, the, most of the plat amendments we do are, deal with non-conforming plats. And that, the current language says that, that non-conforming plats need, shall be held to the parameters, restrictions, conditions, and requirements that were applicable when the plat, original plat was recorded. And so, if that's the case, if by the strict sense of law, you'd have to go, okay, so tw- twenty-five foot setback was enforced at that time, so that's, that's what you're gonna be held to. By holding them to the current requirements, they can take advantages of the improvements to the requirements, for instance, Box Elder subdivision, uh, that was, uh, approved by this body in two thousand and fourteen, may come back to you for an amendment. If that's the case, that, they, they may be looking to, to make some changes to the plat relative to the natural hazards overlay. The natural hazards overlay, uh, the, the language in that, in, in, uh, section five twelve, that is the requirements for the natural hazards overlay is improved drastically, I'd say the language is a lot clearer and it's improved, and I think there's a lot more flexibility in that language, and so it's, I, I think a, a benefit, uh, for, uh, the applicant, certainly in that case, to, to be held to the requirements of the NHO zone today as opposed to two thousand and thirteen.
There, there could be times, right, that it could go the opposite direction?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, th- and that's the case. For instance, I've got a plat, a plat application right now, where they could potentially have a ten-foot setback, and, and if you approve this, they're gonna have to have a fifteen-foot setback. So, um, it, it does go both ways.
Yeah. I'm, I'm thinking of that years ago, a couple, at least two or three years ago, when we went out to, and I can't remember that little town, and they had all those little plats out there, and they were really skinny and tiny.
Mm-hmm.
And, and that was what they had, and I guess technically they could build on that according to what they, you know, what, what it was plotted, and
Yeah, Alberta, yeah.
Now, if, if, if it falls underneath this, then they would have to, they'd have to change everything to, to make it work.
Well, we, we were concerned about Alberta and Vivian Park when we wrote this. And so we inserted a statement, uh, so section six three is the, the subdivision section, that's a section in chapter six we use the most, and it specifically spells out area requirements for lots. But, uh, we considered that in this proposal, uh, to basically, what, what the, uh, what we inserted in there was that if you've got a, a lot like Vivian Park or, or, uh, or in Alberta, that they wouldn't be held to today's area and width standards.
So that has that in there?
It does, yeah, if you look at, in, uh, Roman numeral two, it says, "Further, the requirements of this subsection shall not preclude the combining, combining of existing platted lots or the addition of land to platted lots, nor shall such requirements render an existing platted lot unbuildable because it does not meet the lot area or width requirements of the current development requirements." So, we, we didn't want to take that non-conforming, uh, I guess, the, the fact that it's non-conforming, to take that advantage away from them, so.
Right. Yeah, and that's, that's my concern, is that they're moving along for whatever pace they have, and all of a sudden now there's a change, and now like, you know, now they're they gotta recircle and do everything over again.
Right.
Okay.
I think that's it, I, um, if, if you have any other questions?
The only thing I heard in there was change that must to a, to a may.
Must to a may.
I liked the original language better there.
So, there's, there's two points in there, so the original, basically just says that the application will, will come to the county commission, then you can refer it back, then the county commission made this additional recommendation, and, and it states modification of large-scale development plat that meets or, uh, that vacates or dedicates a street must go before the planning commission, and as I understand, you'd prefer that to say may go before the planning commission for recommendation. And still keep the, the provision that says that the application, that, that all plat amendments go straight to you first.
Right. And, and I'm fine with the may or even just, I don't know if we even could strike that.
I think that would be an option too.
To, to me, I think on that particular change, it's a strike of that addition, because I think it's covered in the part before.
Yeah, I think that's
That's kind of
That's a simpler way.
How I, I viewed that was to just strike that.
And, and let me add, Robert Mark County Attorney's Office, let me add just a couple of things if I could. The part about road vacations, there's a separate statute that deals with that. It does require a public hearing, not at the planning commission level, but here at the county commission level, so that makes some sense, what you're trying to do here. All the things that have been included here are things that the planning commission by statute is not, is not required to hear. So that was the intent here. The one safeguard in here particularly is that this is not adding new buildable lots. So this is really for, we have a lot of these small amendments, the plats, kind of these old plats, and that's kind of what, they take a lot of time, and, and all the, it'd be simpler just to kind of come and get it, speed up a little bit.
Right.
Okay, thank you, any public comment on this particular agenda item? Seeing that, I'll come back up here for potential motion.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the ordinance as stated in number seven with the striking out the language that was discussed.
I'll second that, I have a motion in a second to adopt the ordinance as stated with noted changes, all of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion will carry two zero. All right, next up, we have a, uh, regular agenda item number eight, this is to look at adopting an ordinance to amend section two dash two and section three dash twenty-nine of the Utah County Land Use Ordinance in relationship to agritourism as a temporary use. I'll go ahead and, Bryce, if you want to introduce this one for us?
Bryce Armstrong, Community Development Staff. So, chapter three, uh, dash twenty-nine of the Utah County Land Use Ordinance, establishes certain, uh, temporary uses that, uh, that we allow, a lot of them are seasonal in nature. They include, uh, corn mazes, uh, some of the fall, fall haunted activities, we've recently looked at changing that, if you recall. Uh, the applicant, uh, has proposed a new, uh, temporary use, uh, we've termed agritourism. Um, the, the corn maze provision that we currently have doesn't really capture, uh, some of the other agricultural activities that can be associated with some of these, uh, these events. And so, uh, what we've come up with in working with the applicant is a, a couple of definitions that define agritourism and an agritourism activity, and then a separate temporary use, uh, deemed agritourism, that allows, uh, you know, farmer to, to utilize his land as, as kind of a, gain some alternative income sources. uh, through either the harvest season, or they've mentioned some, some spring activities that, uh, allow the public to come and kind of see what goes on the farm and, and do some fun events and, and generate some income for the farmer. So, uh, we've come up with some, uh, some standards to meet on, uh, on that. It's, as listed in your, uh, application there, and I can answer any specific questions. I won't run through all of those. Uh, one thing I will note is that, um, again, tha- your red line version in your, both your staff report and your, uh, separate document in your attachments include the applicant's original proposal and then, uh, kind of a staff, uh, recommendation. Um, the applicant, uh, is aware of what staff has proposed, and we've got their feedback. And I believe tha- the applicant was, uh, was expressed to the planning commission was, was satisfied with, uh, that, uh, staff recommendation, which is what the commission, planning commission recommended. There was one change, um, if you look at the hours of operation, the, uh, original proposal was, uh, it it ended at ten o'clock, and the applicant, uh, said on, on Friday and Saturday nights, it would nice to have eleven. And so that was, uh, recommended to be changed, included by the planning commission, and that's reflected in your, uh, ordinance that's attached. I should note, this is specific to the RA five zone. Um, there's a minimum requirement of twenty acres, there's a buffer of five hundred feet from adjacent dwellings that are included, and then a bunch of other, uh, uh, conditions in there.
I know, and looking through this one, I actually didn't have any questions on it. It seemed very thoroughly done and.
Yeah, I think it's a, I think it's a good.
I think it's a good thing, 'cause it, it gives us the opportunity to enhance those opportunities in the ag zone. But there's some provisions in there to protect impact on, on neighbors and, and the field and environment of the, of the zone.
We do see that sometimes with our current corn mazes, some of the, the traffic issues. And so try and, uh, try and find that balance.
And that was, like you mentioned, the five hundred feet from another dwelling and different things like that. I think you tried to protect the neighbors pretty good from the change in activity.
Um, couple of questions for you, and I, I love this. I, I, the agritourism, I think that's great that we, tha- tha- that we're looking after that and putting that in place. Um, there are conflicts that happen, as we're well aware. And some of these conflicts happen where we have agritourism in the middle of a city, and you've got a lot of neighbors around. And so, uh, you know, five hundred feet, um, I don't know if five hundred feet's the, if that's the magic number or the magic feet of, of being away. Um, I guess part of my concern is, 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 is that there's an impact to the, to the neighborhood, especially with the neighborhood, not necessarily that you're out on a farm, you're out in that area, but when you're, when you're in the middle of subdivisions that are around, or other homes that are cl- really close by. Um, and I've had multiple individuals call me on that, thinking of one in specific that I know we've talked about.
One thing we've tried to capture with this is, um, have a, a minimum size requirement of twenty acres that hopefully the applicant would kind of self-impose a little bit of a buffer there. Also, this is limited to the RA five zone, uh, which limits the density that generally is allowed in there. That some of the other, uh, concerns that we had were, were in the RR five zone, which has a little higher density, um, that is not proposed to be included in that zone.
The RA five zone is, is on, on their property, what about their property, the property next to them?
There's no, uh, limitation on that. So there, in theory, there could be a, a zone boundary there.
Could be quarter acre lots right next door?
Um, or the city.
Or the city itself?
Sure, yeah, that's, uh, again, you know, there's, there's so many situations out in the county that, you know, you don't wanna be too restrictive when you're trying to craft this, and, but still trying to find that balance to provide that, that buffer, so.
Yeah.
And again, there's, uh, there's a provision that, that has the five hundred feet from a, an adjacent dwelling, and then that can be varied if, uh, they get consent, uh, from that owner as proposed to allow them to be closer if the, that, uh, home that is within that five hundred feet is, is okay with that and give, gives their consent.
One, one of the, one of the thoughts that came to me is, that sometimes when you're doing home-based businesses, you, you're required in a city to go around and talk with your neighbors and, and get, get a certain sign off that you are doing a home-based business, you know, in, in that area. Um, and I'm just, uh, again, I'm trying to find a way that this, this works. I would love to hear Rex's comments on this if he, if he decides, if he'd like to come up. But, uh, how do we, how do we balance that? That's, tha- tha- that's the biggest concern I have, not, not outward agriculture is agriculture, but where you have right next to each other a possible subdivision in the city, and, and, and yet you have all these activities going on, you know, right next door up till eleven o'clock at night, and then they're tearing down till, or, you know, cleaning up till twelve or one, and lights on, and pumpkin patches, thousands of kids running through your back, your backyard, basically, or right, right around the fence. I'm just trying to balance it in, in a way.
'Cause I think it's legitimate, I would be curious, how much of our, our, um, RA five zone would border a city subdivision? Because it seems like most, in thinking of those zones, most of them are buffered into, as we come into a city, to where it wouldn't occur. So I'm just wondering, like, not that it's not a legit concern, but how often would, we have a guess on how often that might even occur?
Yeah, I don't, uh, I don't have any, uh, data on that. Um, it, it, it's rare, and just anecdotally looking at the maps, it seems like I don't, don't see that a lot. Um, but again, a lot of times, these areas are annexed for the purpose of, of development. And then, you know, the, the, the wall or the, the border there is, is the RA five zone. But, um, I, I haven't really seen a whole lot of high-dense development adjacent to RA five zone, but there, it could exist.
I'm just, I'm just thinking of the one that we've dealt with in the past, in which you'd have property owners that said their, their value of their property is diminished, they're trying to sell, they can't. They have hundreds of people, you know, cars and so forth, on roads that are not necessarily made for that kind of traffic and.
Sure, and it's interesting, we had kind of a s- a discussion on the other side of, of this at the planning commission, whether or not sixty-five days was too restrictive. Again, this is temporary in nature to kind of solve those issues, but if you're living next to it and you don't like it, sixty-five days can be a long time, so.
Yeah.
And, uh, sometimes those are, those are, you know, peak days usually are, are weekends and such, and so. Yeah, I do, I do believe the applicant is here, if you have any sort of questions on.
I'd certainly love to hear any other addition, any additional public comment or applicants' comment on this. And just a reminder, if you could please state your name for the record?
Uh, my name's Rex Larson, uh, live in Leland, seven six oh five south, sixteen hundred west. Uh, I have my daughter here, Kara Larson Lewis, who, uh, also lives in Leland, twelve thirty-six west, sixty-nine thirty south. I hope I didn't say that too fast. Okay, a little bit of history. Uh, as both of you remember, I was asked to serve on the, uh, task force to look at ways to preserve agriculture in Utah County. Um, as we worked through tho- that process and the, uh, working with Envision Utah and came up with their conclusions, as I read through that, none of the recommendations worked for us. Uh, for whatever reasons, it, they didn't, they just didn't fit, uh, the things that, that we could do. And so, uh, our daughter Kara and her family, her husband and four boys, wanted to move back, back to Utah, they were living in Nevada. And, uh, my parents' home became available, and so, uh, I said, "Yeah, I've got a house for you, come on up." And they said, "What can we do to help you?" And I said, "Well, help me make more money." And, uh, so they, they took it from there. And, uh, Kara created a, a Google Doc that they could all add ideas how, how we can help grandpa make more money on the farm. The common thread, uh, from, from her four boys, uh, was a corn maze pumpkin patch. They'd been to them, uh, other places and, and thought, thought people enjoyed them, they enjoyed them. Um, and so that, that idea kind of surfaced. As, as we looked at, uh, the possibility and the locations that we could, uh, could, could hold that, uh, foremost in our mind was not just entertainment, but education, helping the public understand and, uh, even experience the miracle of agriculture. And so that's, that's how we've, uh, kind of proceeded with this, is, uh, coming up with something that we can work that will enhance the farm income. Every, every commodity I produce right now is in a low market. And so it's one of those hang on and hope next year's better type of situation. Uh, but as we met with community development and, and gave them a list of the ideas that we would like to do, uh, they reviewed it and made suggestions, and, uh, and as we worked together, the zone that was currently in place, or the, the language, just didn't fit. And so we looked at other counties, uh, we looked at, uh, we have friends in, in Weber County that, that do this, and we looked at their ordinance, we looked at others, and, and came up with the, uh, the language that's, that's before you. And we feel like it's something we can work with. Uh, there is a provision there, uh, if we were in a situation, uh, where we had neighbors within that five hundred feet, if we could get a written permission from them to, to move ahead, then, uh, we would like that included. Uh, our current location, that's not a problem. Uh, currently, we are proposing to have this, uh, east of I fifteen off of the Benjamin exit, off of edg- exit two fifty-three. Parcel of ground that, that I've owned for several years and been in the family for hundreds of years. And, uh, it's, it's a, um, it's just a way for us to, first of all, bring family back to help. If we'd had time, I'd have had her bring her four boys, so you could get acquainted with, uh, with my workforce.
Your stable workforce.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And so, uh, so for me, it's, it's twofold. It, uh, brings family back, and the second is we teach people about, about agriculture. Excuse me, I think if we can accomplish that, then we've done a good thing. I get letters, phone calls all the time. Uh, "Let us help you put a truck stop on your land."
Yeah.
Uh, that's the last crop.
Right.
In my mind, that's selling my birthright for a s- a potage. And.
See, I see this, I see this as being perfect for the application that you have there and how it's written here. I'm just wondering if there's a way, Bryce, um, because your situation is fantastic for this. But what about, uh, in the, in the county, those rare instances where we have, where we have, uh, lots of neighbors? And I don't know if there's a way that, that it could be, if we could modify that for, you know, some sort of extra look? Because your situ- like I said, your situation, it, it, it looks perfect. And I, I've talked with the commissioners up in Weber County, they actually have put a lot of effort into their agritourism, um, doing some things that I, I laugh about a little bit, some of it's kind of funny what they're trying to, trying to accomplish. But it's great, you know, they're putting forth the effort.
Yeah.
Do it.
We have a second location that, uh, well, it was originally our first location, uh, because it had an opportunity to give guided tours, take them down along the Spanish Fork River and show them things that we're trying to do to enhance that property and, and those types of things. But we had houses, uh, neighbors' homes too close, and so, so we looked, well, let's, let's look at the other, other location. Plus, that, that location, uh, came under the jurisdiction of the Money Act protection area and was then subject to, to different, uh, guidelines than, than current. And so, uh, that's kind of a separate issue, but, but we're, we're hoping, and I think this, this location will probably be our best. It just didn't have the opportunity for me to introduce our cattle and, and those types of things of that, that part of our operation and help people understand why that's a, why that's a good thing and, and the benefits of, uh, grazing on the public lands and those types of things. So that, uh, this current location will, will accomplish just about everything except that.
What's the, uh, what's the zoning around that property?
I believe he's fully in the RA five zone, and so.
Around him would be all?
Yes.
RA five?
Yeah.
So we'd be pretty consistent with.
Yeah, I, my experience, it's, it's, it's just, sure is a challenge to legislate people to be good neighbors, you know, and, uh, it's, uh, can kind of be, be, uh, tough. I, I think one maybe suggestion, if, if you so choose, to maybe put a, a, a buffer, uh, around, uh, from adjacent residential designated zones or a city, um, that would capture the higher densities in the county plus the city. Um, and, and it's just kind of a, an idea, if you'd like to, i- if, if that is, is a concern. That way you could have a, a greater buffer from those type of, uh, of scenarios if exists at the time they come in for an application. Uh, perhaps if they fall within a, a city's annexation policy declaration, you can involve the city a little bit. Again, these are, these are temporary, so each year they'd have to come back for, for separate approval.
So to me, this one's where it gets a little ironic, I guess, because when I look at, if where the most conflict would come, would actually be when you're bringing more people into an area where there's not people. Like, I live where I live, 'cause I don't like living around people. And so if my neighbor decided to start bringing in for forty-five days, a hundred people a day, that would irritate me. If I live in a subdivision where I'm used to a hundred people driving in and out every day, the traffic change doesn't, that's just my perception. I'm, I don't, I would almost see more conflict going the other direction than I would close to a, a residential area, because they're used to people coming to visit the park and play tennis or driving past their house to get to school, and that, the traffic is, is something that's a normal, everyday part of life. Whereas if it's actually in another area, that's where I would think you would see a, a bigger change. But I also think that's where you see people being understanding about it, because they understand what we're attempting to do here is preserve an opportunity to be financially stable. That's just a thought, that's kind of a.
It would seem that way, but I, I just, I just know that one is that we, we had all kinds of conflict up there, where I don't know if we'd see it in other areas, I don't know why they would.
This, this particular location, we have I fifteen on, on one boundary, eight thousand south on another boundary, both. Well, eight thousand south is getting way too busy, but it is what it is. And, uh, so the traffic's there, I mean, tha- that's not gonna increase anything that way, I don't think.
Yeah.
Drastically.
That's why I said it looks perfect for this situation.
We've got, they've got the correct accesses, uh, all currently in place. And as a backup, we've got a county road on the west side that we can have for emergency access. And so, uh, I think we've come up with a pretty good location, uh, for this.
So, so Bryce, this is, this is temporary, so it's only, it's, it's in the sense that you do it every year. Um, if there's, if there is conflict, I'm, I'm just trying to find that balance, 'cause I, I know what's gonna happen up north with, with this. Um, it can be a look back, can we find a look back in there and, and, and see how that, how that works? I don't even know how it would work with, with the criteria that we have here, if that would even, if they'd even come in and be applying for it or not.
Yeah, tha- the way it's currently drafted, they would come in for a temporary use permit each sixty-five days they wanna utilize per calendar year. And so as long as they meet the criteria, they would be entitled to approval. Um, I, I don't know if you're trying to maybe get a, a, a capture, a situation where we receive complaints, kind of.
Yeah, so if, if after your first year of operation, you receive twenty complaints, I don't know what the number would be, then it would, it would need to be reviewed more thoroughly, I don't know.
Yeah, something like that, I mean, I could, I could go there.
Take it back to the commission or not, you know, in that situation, I, we can look at that.
The hard part's like how do you develop a standard for the complaints to be? The hard part's like how do you develop a standard for the complaints to be consistent to where you're not responding to public clamor, but actual impact on...
From the neighbors that are right there and not just somebody from England.
Yeah, or just, you know, not, not that it's a bad idea, just trying to figure out...
But the same way, we do with, you know, with the other agricultural protection.
I guess I'm looking at mink farms, right?
There's, what is it? Five? I can't remember what the, what the criteria is.
Five within a certain year.
We put five, you know, complaints in there, then it goes through a, when it comes back, the commission reviews it a little, reviews it, understa-, looking at the complaints.
Yeah, and in that situation...
Miss complaint, meaning complaints from landowners nearby, not just that...
We don't like it.
Down the road called in and said, I don't like whatever.
We'd have to establish that criteria. I mean, currently our, you know, complaint system just has someone thought of forms.
I, I almost think it's, and is it not? It's, it's built into here to some degree with, under your 500 feet from an existing dwelling, you've got written approval. I almost wonder if it wouldn't be easier if we're really concerned about the density to say if you have, and this is the hard part, I don't know how you figure these numbers out. If you've got 50 residences within your half mile radius of where the activity's taking place, you have to have a public hearing or you have to have sign off on the activity? Is that something that would be even...
I don't know, I don't know about the sign off. Do you know what I'd go with sign off?
Well, that's, I'm, that's a, I don't know that I want to, or at least notification.
We could maybe do adjacent property notices just as a way of disclosure that, but still, again...
Disclosure...
It's going to let them know that...
This is going to happen.
Happen, application's been put in.
Perhaps disclosure is a better...
Because yeah, that would just let them know and they can come and look at the application, I guess, that, that we're, that's going through the process, but there would still be, you know, no public, there's no public meeting associated with this, which is kind of how it's designed.
Right. Which I'm not necessarily wanting, I'm just throwing some ideas around.
So we could, you know, send...
Put that in there and then if there was, if there was five or more, you know, five or more complaints...
I, I'll just, my gut on this is location is everywhere with business and my gut is that 99.9% of all this just works itself out because if it's not a good location, you're not going to keep doing it.
Yeah.
And, and that, that's just kind of, well, I want to try and build something into this. My, what my guts wanting to tell me right here is, look, this is going to resolve itself. There might be some conflicts or things that arise, but if it's, if it's not beneficial, if it's bad business, then you're not going to continue to do the bad business because of the location. You're going to find a different place to do it.
Absolutely.
And so at what point do we say we've got to trust that economics to work itself out without us having to come up with the scenario for every, legislation flying for every possible scenario?
No, and I don't want to legislate everything. I just want to make sure that everyone has an opportunity on an equal voice basis to be able to, you know, to be able to say, wait a second. Yeah, they want to use their property the way they want it to be done and I applaud that. But in some cases, what I'm hearing is, is others can't even sleep at night because they've got all this noise going on constantly and they can't sell their, so it, it transfers over back and forth. And, and a different situation. Believe me, it's different up north than it is down here in the southern part of the county.
Yeah.
Lot more.
Well, and it'll, you've lost a lot of ag ground up north and this is, this our way to try and preserve some of it.
They're growing a lot of homes up there.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and so this, maybe I could introduce, have my daughter come up and tell you why, why this is important to them.
I'm Kara Lewis. I live at 1236 West, 6930 South in Leland. And like my dad mentioned, our family recently moved back to Leland. We're living in my grandparents' home after living in Nevada for 13 years. And over those 13 years, every time we returned to Leland, we watched more and more homes being put up, more and more development going on. And I don't know if you knew my grandpa Glenn, but he was born and raised in Leland and very strong supporter of that area. And most people that move in don't even know what Leland is. It's just one of those areas that people haven't really heard of. And as I've been living in our area now and meeting some of these people that are moving in, a lot of them have told me they've never even, they didn't even know where Benjamin or Lake Shore was because they haven't even been out to the west, west of the freeway or that area. And it really kind of breaks my heart seeing agriculture disappearing. It was such a big part of my childhood and something that, one of the main reasons we wanted to move back was so my children could experience being out on the farm and being with my grand, or with their grandpa. My parents actually live in my grand, my great grandparents' home, so we have a, you know, huge history there. And so when my dad gets these letters of people wanting to, you know, like he said, put in a truck stop or put in something, it's a big struggle for him because it would almost be easier to sell out and be done and, but that, I know that agriculture is important to him. So as my husband and I have been trying to help him figure out ways to keep agriculture here, you know, like he said, we want it to be an educational thing to get people to come, not just for a fun family activity, but have educational signs and booths and different things that help them understand why, you know, agriculture is important, where their food comes from. A lot of kids don't even understand that anymore, you know, just go to the grocery store and get it. But so this is a lot more than just a fun way, a fun activity for families. It's something that we feel really strongly about in keeping not only the Leland name out there so people know where they're living and know where they're visiting, but keeping, just keeping the agriculture land in agriculture and not just filling it in with pavement and homes. And so that's really what we're trying to accomplish here. And all the activities that we have come up with and as we've worked with the county on this is everything will be related to agriculture in some way. We're not just going to be putting up bouncy houses and making it turn into a big carnival. Like all the activities we're working on are agricultural based. So that's what we're, we're really hoping to make it an educational experience and just a great time, great thing for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Any additional comment on this ordinance?
Shauna Phelps, I live out at West Mountain. I just have a question. I missed a lot of it. I came, the weekend threw me off and I looked at my calendar, looked at my clock and I went, oh my gosh, I was out thinning peaches, sorry. How is this going to affect, I mean, we're going from what used to be just a typical farm and we are going full bore agritourism, U-PIC. That's all we're doing. Our kids are all gone now, we don't have slave labor. So, you know, we've got to do something else and eventually we'll end up having, you know, as it is right now, when it comes to planting and those types of things, we've got to hire. Now, we've got enough land that we can put in parking and those types of things so that we're not dealing with people parking all along the street. But that only happens if we are going to eventually extend our dead end road. Once we can extend that dead end road, then we will have that available. And it's been a year and a half process. It's been torture and it's still not approved. So there needs to be something to, to make people realize how important agriculture is for our communities. And I, I want to make sure that this is not going to affect, I guess, what I have plans to do. Sounds like we kind of have the same idea that we want people to, to participate in the agricultural experience and it is good for kids and it is good for families, for them to know where their food come from and actually have them pick what they're going to eat. But I do understand that if you live in a neighborhood, you don't want cars all up and down the road. So it's tricky.
Hey, Shauna, I want, so on that road, I thought we approved that road. What, what's not been approved?
Ah, you know what? You have to put in the application, you have to turn in all of these things, you have to make sure you have enough water for all the lots, even though it's, it's just been...
But we've, we've already...
Torture.
Designated which, the road itself.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, this has just been, yeah, so it's hard. It's just a lot of work. You have to make sure that you're jumping through all of the county hoops.
Yeah. So putting something in place...
But we still haven't built the road. We, we can't get, we haven't gotten the yes, you may. Here you go. We keep having to do more things.
Is it, was there anything in this proposal that you were concerned with?
That, I'm not sure. I've literally walked in the door after it was all talked about.
Because from my perspective, this really enhances what you're trying to do.
That's what I'm, I'm here to say, yes, it's, it's great. It needs to happen. I, I've been to all of these different agritourism courses and things such as that and I know the federal government is a little bit, some of their regulations kind of contradict what the states and, and some of the counties want to allow. And it makes it kind of tricky, literally, you're, like, for instance, you're supposed to have a sign out there after somebody is picking, even if it's for themselves and they eat it, they have to literally, supposedly by federal standards, they're supposed to go wash their hands before they go, I mean, it's so ridiculous. You're just like, really? And you're supposed to have all of these signs posted that say if you eat any of the things that you're picking, you have to go wash your hands first before you start picking again. It's so obnoxious. And so anything that makes this agritourism experience easier, I'm all for without torturing the neighbors, of course.
Yeah.
So...
So the U-PIC is under agritourism?
I, I think it's, it is. I think it should be.
Is that true, Bryce? Because that seems odd to me, but maybe it is.
Sorry.
It could be under that umbrella. We already currently allow it. It's just part of their agricultural operation.
Right.
If it's grown on site, people can come and harvest, you know, their, what's, what's been grown on site, so...
I see them as being different, but maybe that's just me. I don't know.
I mean, it, it could be integrated as part of their, you know, an operation too.
Right. You can have both.
Yeah, we currently allow produce stands and those type of things and including people to come and pick their own, purchase it on site, sure.
Any more questions for me? Okay, thank you.
Any additional comment on this ordinance? Seeing none, we'll come back up here for final thoughts or considerations.
I, I like this and maybe, maybe as we, you know, we're taking stabs at it, which always can be, be modified as we go on down through the years or whatever with it. I, I want to propose that we, okay, what number is it? What number are we on?
Eight, I believe.
We're eight. That we adopt, we adopt the ordinance to amend section 2.2 and section 3-29 of the land use related to the addition of agritourism to the temporary use with a couple of conditions in there that, that if there's, if there's complaints, if there's more than five complaints related to those living in the area, that it'll, it'll automatically get a look back or a review. And I didn't know if you wanted to put the other one in there or not with the notification.
I'm, I was fine with it the way it was, so...
You were fine with it being out?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So that's all I'd like to include in it.
Okay. I will second that motion. I have a motion and a second to adopt the land, the ordinance amendment is stated in section number eight with the additional, addition of one provision that if five complaints occur as a result of the activity, the following application will receive full review from the commission. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That will carry to zero. All right. We are now on to setting our closed meetings. We do not need 12 or 13, but we do 14 and 15.
I'll make a motion that we strike number 12 and number 13 from our regular agenda.
Second, all those in favor of striking regular agenda items number 12 and 13, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion will carry to zero.
I make a motion that we approve and set a date, time and location for a closed meeting to discuss the character of professional competence or physical or mental health of the individual, or individuals at today's date at this location to find the completion of our regular agenda.
Second, I have a motion and a second to approve regular agenda item number 14. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion will carry to zero.
Make a motion that we approve and set a date, time and location for a closed meeting for a strategy session to discuss the pending or reasonable litigation at today's date at this location to find the completion of our regular agenda.
Second, I have a motion and a second to approve regular agenda item number 15. All of those please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries to zero. We'll now move into our work session presentations. The first one, the diesel emissions program presentation will be continued for one week so that we have the opportunity to get the right people here and make that presentation. And that will bring us to our second work, work session presentation, which will come from Lena Jensen in our HR department. This is in relationship to a compensation study and we've had a committee that we've appointed to go through and review a bunch of stuff. They've been working diligently the past couple of months and this is overview of that so that we can eventually get to an actionable item.
Thank you, commissioners. I appreciate the opportunity to give you a little bit of a general overview of what we've been working on for the last six weeks or so. I just want to go through a little bit of what the process is that we've been going through and give you a little history and context and then a general idea of what our recommendation would be. So first of all, I just want to say that a market study is really about pay structure and not so much about individuals' pay. And it's the HR director's duty to set pay and ranges and midpoints and so forth that would provide equitable and adequate compensation. So what the object is, is to set the market point or the midpoint of the range for a job based on both market data, also the scope and responsibility and level of difficulty of the job and also looking at internal equity. So it's an exercise that's partly objective based on data you can see and partly subjective based on judgment. It's not an exact science, it's more of a combination, I guess you'd say. So it's typical in an organization, especially of this size, to benchmark a certain number of jobs for which you can find good market data and then slot the other jobs around them based on where they sort of fit together. Because there is not good data available on every job that we have. And so just a couple of words about the data. I think the, the primary source of data that fed into the study was, came from a group called TechNet, which is a group that the county, we have belonged to for many years and almost every public employer in Utah and several now outside of Utah feed their data into and participate in and update their, their data twice a year. And so my understanding is that Dr. McGrath, who was commissioned to do this study last year, used that data as well as maybe some additional data as well. So I just wanted to say that we have spot checked, I'll talk a little bit more about this, certain positions and tried to see what would we have calculated if we had used our regular data methods through TechNet and, and found that in many cases or most cases that there, there were pretty similar outcomes. And so although we didn't start from scratch with new data, we did do extensive review of some of the data that was used and I'll talk a little bit more about that. So what we did to start with is in HR, we kind of took the fair market value that she identified as sort of the market point or target point for the, each job and matched it to tables 18 and 19 of our salary structure, which are the tables that came into play post COLA. So you gave a COLA at the beginning of 2018. So we sort of matched, well, here's where this job should be paid according to her. Where does it match to, to the closest midpoint on the new salary structure? So obviously all the jobs are closer to where they were supposed to be after the 3.2% COLA than they were before. So then we ran sort of reports of each department and all the jobs they have in that department in descending grade order according to that outcome. And HR, meaning mostly Merritt and I, did kind of an internal equity review within each department. We looked for situation where, you know, there was leapfrogging of one job over another where that job had always, you know, traditionally been at a lower level. We looked at compression issues. If you move this job and don't move that job, then, you know, does that create a problem? We looked at job families to look at the relationships between them. And so we did kind of a department, department review of our own and made some adjustments as we did that. And we simultaneously kind of cross-referenced against a countywide list of positions in descending job grade order so that we could kind of keep an eye on where jobs in different departments fell relative to each other. And then in that process, we also, as I mentioned, to kind of spot check a few key jobs by running our own data from TechNet and comparing it to the fair market value that had been identified. So at the end of that process, we had draft position salary schedules, structures for each department head that we gave to them to say, okay, now you look at where these jobs are rated or graded within your own department and focus on the market points and the ranges for each job. Again, not focusing on the individual, but on where the jobs fell relative to each other within the department. And then we were also asked them to look at, there were several positions for which new titles had been proposed through the process with Dr. McGrath, and some career ladder consolidations and different things like that. So we said, you know, you look at all that now and, and let us know how, how this looks to you as far as it relates to your own department. So following that committee meeting, Rob and Merritt and I met individually with each department head to discuss their questions and concerns, one on one, or one on three, I guess you'd say. And so they were each invited to identify any specific positions which they thought looked out of line, didn't fit within their organization structure and so on. We also talked about internal equity and compression issues within their department. We resolved any questions or issues about the new titles and about career ladders. Some wanted to kind of go back to where they had been. Others wanted to keep the new proposals. And so, so then following those meetings, which took place, I guess, a couple of weeks ago, most of them, we, Merritt and I pulled data from the TechNet system for the jobs that had been identified by the department heads as, you know, you really ought to take another look at this one because it doesn't look right to me. And so we, we pulled all the data we could from those, on those positions. And also, in some cases, department heads provided their own data that they had received through their own sources. We looked at all that and did, as a result of that, make a few adjustments, but in many cases, determined that no, even, you know, that, that there is no adjustment warranted, so we left it where it was. Then we met again with all the department heads in this committee last Thursday, gave them the new revised sort of final draft of the proposal, again, based on job hierarchies and so on. And we talked about implementation and costs and different things like that. So once we had these schedules kind of in place, Merritt and George ran reports to try to gauge what's the individual impact. If every individual moves the same number of steps as their position is scheduled to move, what would the cost for that be? And we were asked to look at general fund versus non-general fund. And so just, again, sort of from a global perspective, the cost estimate for general fund employees, if we implemented this pay period fifteen through twenty-six is just over a million dollars, about a million eighty-one thousand. And that includes the additional benefit costs. And then an additional about four hundred thousand for the Health Department and D-DAP, who are not in the general fund. But anyway, they have some different funding mechanisms. And then another five hundred thousand for other non-general fund employees assessing and collecting, plus a few pieces of other departments that would fall into that category. So as a committee, we talked about it and feel strongly that full implementation going forward would be in the best interests of the county and its employees, and hopefully enable us to retain the current employees that we have, boost their morale, and hire new employees so that we can become fully staffed. As I'm sure you're aware, we have a lot of vacancies that are difficult to fill in this job market. And just a couple of other notes, the Personnel Management Act requires the county to adhere to merit principles. And one of those is equitable and adequate compensation that we're required to provide it. Not just for the employees, I would say, but it says for the, that we're required to provide for the preparation, maintenance, and revision of a position classification plan for all positions in the career service in order to be able to provide and maintain a high-quality public workforce. So it's, it's for the public as well as for the employees that, in the public's interest, that we're able to, to maintain a stable and high-quality workforce. Also, as you're probably aware, our, our county pay plan requires us to conduct a market study every third year and to base recommended increases on the market study every third year, and then on the COLA situation on the two years intervening. And so it's our responsibility to make these adjustments and for the HR director to set the appropriate grades and ranges. And I think this recommendation does that. And just one other point that kind of came up in our discussions is that the Utah Association of Counties publishes a fact book every year about, you know, just different interesting comparative data of counties to each other. And one statistic that's been consistent as long as I've had access to the data is that Utah County ranks twenty-ninth out of the twenty-nine counties in Utah in terms of number of county employees per ten thousand residents. Our average is seventeen point nine employees. And our next closest ranking twenty-eighth is Davis and Washington County, that each have about twenty-five employees per ten thousand. Weaver has thirty-nine, more than double what we have. And Salt Lake County has almost fifty employees per ten thousand. So what this says is that our employees are stretched thin and, and asked to do a lot for the pay that they receive. And, you know, we've always prided ourselves on being lean, lean-staffed, but especially considering the rapid growth in the county, I think it's important that we have our pay levels at a point where we can fill our positions promptly, and that we continue to consider whether we are staffed at adequate levels. So again, that's kind of the global overview and the number that we have come up with as a, as a tentative cost to implement. I'll follow up with you with more detail, but I want to thank you for considering this important recommendation. And be happy to answer any questions you have, or I don't know, Rob wanted to make some additional comments. We've had a lot of people working hard to get to this point, so I'm, we're hoping that, that we're able to bring this to a conclusion.
I got a couple of questions for you. So did you redo the market study?
No, I would not say we redid it. I would say we did some thorough reviewing of it and, and did kind of some auditing of it, maybe you could say, but we did not start from scratch.
Just using their information and then projecting from there?
We started with their information, and as I kind of talked about, we, we reviewed a lot of it. We looked at, I don't, I don't know how many, but dozens of jobs for which it was, felt like these might not be in line with where they should be. So, so we did, like I say, a pretty thorough review. I feel pretty good about where it is now. I think we did as much as could be done in the timeframe we had, and so.
If I can follow up with that conversation I had with Dr. McGrath on it. You know, I want to do some verification with the numbers that she had. And it, it sounds like similar to what you were saying in the way of benchmarking and so forth. She pushed back really super hard on that and, and said, no, you can't do that. That's called cherry picking. And, and working down through this, this, this market study, if you, if you cherry pick or if you get, and the reason why you go independent is so that you don't have biases, right? That's, that's what, that's why we, why we did it. And so I'm, I'm, I'm curious, because I have not seen the study. I have not seen, or the committee's recommendation. I have no, no clue what that is. I know we have something later this week for conversations on that, so I can see it for the first time. But when, when she was saying to me, you can't, you can't do that because you'll start to cherry pick and you'll start to benchmark and move it around. And in our conversation, when we said, let's, let's set this up, we put a million dollars away. And that million dollars from, from me, a, a vote of yes will be that we, that we take those that are, that are out of line, that are down below, and we move, we move them up. That was, that was the intent all along, is to take that million dollars which we, which we had put away. To do that and move them up, my concern is, is that it sounds like a market study in the way of implementation of all the different areas was, was part of this focus. And where that comes in, and I hear not general fund, but other, other funds that are going to be used for implementation on there. Again, I haven't seen it, so I don't know what that looks like, but I do know that we put a million, million dollars away to, to get those levels, you know, that are, that are below, up, up to a certain standard. So I'm, I'll be curious to, to see what we are doing. But I am concerned that we're doing some cherry picking in there, if that's the right word, and doing some benchmarking and saying this, now we're going to validate a certain portions of a market study that almost all of us saw some, some major flaws in, or we couldn't bear.
Well, and, and I understand what she's saying, and there is, you know, there is, I guess, that danger, but I would be more concerned about that if, if we were basing it one hundred percent on market data. But having done many of these over the years, I will tell you that you don't have good market data on every job, for one thing. But also, you do, in my opinion, have to look at the internal equity, the relationship between jobs.
That's why you benchmark.
The difficulty of, you know, the scope and the consequence of error and all kinds of factors that play into the different levels of jobs. And I guess my concern with just raising people that are the furthest out, I mean, those are some of the ones that raise the biggest questions in some ways, you know, as to why would they be so far out? And so, so I would have some degree of discomfort, I guess, just, just focusing on those jobs according to that outcome. Because that, in another way, is maybe a different kind of cherry picking, but that, that ends up, I think, with less equitable overall implementation. But I understand that was something that was talked about.
Yeah, and the, and the back pay. We talked about paying back, which I'm, I'm a yes on that. We pay it back. We, we committed to that, and I'm for that. I'm for that, that back pay of, of the employees, which we stated that we would do. And so that needs to be put into it as well.
Okay, and, and I understand, or I hear that that was talked about. And I would just say that with our Workday system in the state it's in, I'm not sure retroactive back pay could really be handled. So maybe some kind of bonus or-
It's a bonus, whatever it is.
Additional compensation for, to, you know, to afford a compensation for that would be-
Complications with it.
Technical complications getting it done, so we have to navigate through.
It'll be challenging enough to, to do what we're trying to do with this. But, but I do understand that concern, and I think it's, it's great if there, there can be a way to, to make some of that up. But, but to me, the greatest good would be achieved by, you know, fully implementing it going forward from here. But maybe we can have a piece of that also.
It sounds like, this sounds like full implementation doesn't happen with the million dollars, is what you're saying.
Well, again, it kind of depends where, who you count in the general fund, if we're, if we're talking the general fund. But it's about countywide, it's a little under two million, about one point nine or eight, seven, or something like that. But I do understand assessing and collecting has some funds, funding set aside for implementation?
Oh.
Okay, well, so anyway, that, that's about a fourth of it. The Health Department and D-DAP are about another fourth of it, and then the general fund, traditionally thought of general fund people are about half of it.
My other question I had, for generally speaking, could you talk just briefly about this, this TechNet and what's there? And then it sounds like there was a mechanism there to kind of verify or cross-check what we'd originally received.
TechNet is a Salt Lake company that was started by a man named Mike Swallow. He's, he was a consultant at first, and then he kind of went full-time into developing his, his compensation planning sort of business. He does a lot of salary study implementations. And he formed a survey group, at least fifteen years ago, I'd say, where public entities are invited to join. I think we pay seven fifty a year maybe now, or something, to be a member of it. And every member is required to update salary data on all their benchmark jobs. And there are probably a couple hundred benchmark jobs at least. And so twice a year, it's supposed to be current as of August first and February first. You input all your actual data, your ranges, your benefits, all kinds of information into the system. And then as a member, you can say, for example, I want to, you know, I want to pull out whatever data you have relative to a corrections specialist or something. And so you can, you can select which entities you want to show up in your data, or you can look at everybody, or you can slice and dice it all kinds of different ways to pull out. And they'll report, here's, here's our minimum midpoint and maximum of the range. Here's our actual average. Here's our mean, or median, and how many incumbents they have, who they report to. So it's got a lot of good information in it. And like I say, almost all public employers of any size in Utah, I think, belong to it. And then he's really kind of gone national, so there's a lot of data outside of Utah now, too. We don't typically use that very much, but occasionally we want to compare to what is going on in adjoining states.
I appreciate that. And part of the reason I appreciate that is, is we went through the initial process. The presentation back was always, this is hidden, you can't have, there's no way to cross-check. You know, and this obviously is a very different story than what I was told originally. There's a way for me to come to you and say, how accurate? How close are we here, and you have a way to verify?
In my understanding is she did have access to that data source, and, and I'm sure she had many others as well. And like I say, sometimes you can pull out good data. Sometimes it's like, there's nothing that really matches how we are organized because it's not just the general functions. You want to, you're supposed to have about an eighty percent match to really say this is a good comparison. And sometimes we have that, sometimes we don't.
Visit with you about some of those specifics.
Right, yep.
That will help a lot.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Rob, did you have anything to run down?
Robert Moore County Attorney's Office. Let me just address a couple of, of the items addressed today. First, let me also say thanks to Lena and to Merritt for their hard work and the department heads. We did have three different meetings on this. We had lots of discussions, and they were vibrant discussions about how this ought to look. I think when, and just, and department heads can speak for themselves, but I will say that I think a real concern of the department heads was, how do I bring people in my vacant positions? And how do I keep the people that I have? And, and that's a real concern for, for the department heads, especially in this tough market that we're in. And so that, that was kind of driving our discussions, how, how do we do that? And also, going back to what Commissioner Lee said a little while, little while ago, the concerns over the McGrath study. There were concerns over the data because we didn't have the data, et cetera. So when Lena came in and she kind of had, we had these kind of, almost in a way, seemingly impossible tasks. And part of the way to, to deal with that, to at least look at the information that we had for the McGrath study, was to audit that study. And that's what Lena's done, and her and Merritt have to audit the study, to take and look at different positions, in particular, positions that the department had either felt was too high or too low, or maybe that didn't seem to sound right, if you will, because they just seemed to be so far out, either too low or too high, sometimes, in some cases. And so that was some of the things that, that was audited and looked at, and we did rely on that system that was just mentioned. Also, as to the issue of the assessing and collecting, the information on that came from Chris Paulson, and he's not here right now, but he did provide account numbers that were set aside for the money for the implementation of the market study, for assessing and collecting. And so I'll, I'll provide that to Brian, and we'll talk about those offline if we can, and kind of see where we're at. He provided me that information.
Because assessing and collecting, usually assessing and collecting is, is that you use the money, you know, it's, it's a use it, and then once it's, once it's not used during that calendar year, it goes into general fund.
Well, I'll just provide the account numbers.
Put it aside as a-
Yeah, there's about a hundred eighty-nine thousand, I think, set aside total, between two different counts, yeah. So I'll be happy to provide that.
Chris is right there. I just don't remember that at all during our budget, and I went up to find where, where that was, and I did not see it anywhere.
Well, I appreciate that, and the other- Well, I appreciate that. And the other thing that we'll provide you is what a paper by paper breakdown of the amounts, et cetera, on this. But unless you have other questions for me, again, I'm grateful for those that have helped along this process. It's, now we, we'll talk to you more about it, give you more of the details of it, and see what. I suspect that eventually we'll be coming back on for some sort of approvals of whatever's decided by, by this commission.
Right.
Thank you for your time today.
Thank you.
Hi, Chris Paulson. I just want to clarify on the assessing and collecting. Within code, it actually states that assessing and collecting must be, what's the correct accounting term? Reconciled? Must be reconciled and kept exclusively from the general fund. So even when there is excess funds, that must be reconciled outside the general fund and maintained outside the general fund. So there is no commingling, unless there is insufficient funds, and then the A and C functions can tap into the general fund. So just a clarification on that. And that goes for surplus as well. During the, and Rob mentioned, he'll talk to you about this later, but during the budgetary process, the A and C fund was set aside and talked about separate from the general fund during that process. And we can provide you with the document that was provided during that, along with the minutes if you need it. But lines 11 through 13 had to do with the salary study. And within the minutes, it was determined that those three lines that made up over $300,000 would be retained within the general fund as needed in the future, depending on how the salary study was implemented.
Within the general fund?
No, within the A and C.
I thought you said general fund.
Yeah, it was within the A and C surplus, or it's the fund balance is actually what I'm trying to refer to. So I believe the other points will probably be discussed later. But we, we have sat down as a committee, we've worked through the details. There are a lot of variables still out there, as you well understand. But we look forward to working with you through this process.
Yeah, let's have more discussion on that.
Fantastic, all right, thank you.
Morning, Jeff Beeman County Attorney. I just want to begin by expressing my appreciation to the commission. Maintaining, as Lena mentioned, a viable workforce for Utah County is critical, not just for the success of individual departments, but for the county as a whole. And we really have been pinched in the last year or two doing that. The salary, the market study is an important piece in maintaining our workforce and maintaining those that are here and recruiting those that we need to fill vacancies with. So I appreciate the process. I will admit, I was a little disappointed in how the McGrath study went. When we got five different options, I was thoroughly confused. Didn't know where we were going or heading. And then Rob Moore and then Lena picked up that, what I would call a mess, and have clarified it. They were very open and transparent in what they were doing with us. They were very receptive to our questions and concerns. You probably know that Lena's a little tough. So some of the things that I wanted, I didn't get, but I think she's been very fair. And I think she's done a great job of looking at the actual data, rather than just our wish list. And thanks to Lena, she really took a process that I think, and Rob, that was really challenging for us to understand and know where we're going. And has done a great job, I think, providing the commission with a way forward. Back to many things that she said and Rob, we, we are concerned that we need to implement the market study fully. The future of our workforce depends on having committed and professional employees that can do more than the same employees do in other counties. As she mentioned, we have the lowest rate of employees per capita in the state. And to maintain that, we really have to attract and retain the best employees. And I know from speaking with the employees in my department and others, there's a lot of concern about that right now. Salt Lake is actively recruiting, in my field, they actively recruit all the time. They called one of our attorneys just in the last couple of months, seeking to recruit her to Salt Lake County. Fortunately, we're able to retain her. But a lot of that is with a promise or the expectation that we'll get close to Salt Lake's wages. And that's our hope. And again, my thanks to you for doing this, and I would recommend that you fully implement the market study. I know funding is always an issue, but I see this as a critical component to the success of Utah County down the road, especially if we want to maintain a fairly lean workforce. Thank you.
Well, Commissioners Ralph Clegg with the Health Department. And just want to make a few comments on the process. I appreciate the process. Appreciate all the work that HR's gone into and the commission in willing, being willing to, to address this issue and involve the department heads in this issue. As Jeff expressed before with what Dr. McGrath had, there were so many different scenarios. And we couldn't get the back, back information for it, that we were kind of lost as to what was going to happen. And even make comments or try to come up with, you know, solve some equity issues or some compression issues, which that study would have created for us. But Lena and Rob have been very open. We've had good discussions as a department. Is it perfect? No, it's, it's not perfect. But it goes a long way to helping us with some of the retention and hiring issues. You know, we have a situation where a state agency has come and kind of headed 100, one of our senior staff. You know, that's going on right now, because the market's so competitive. So it's very, very important in this tight market that we be competitive as well and, and good for our, our employees. You know, they listened as we went through this process as department heads. I know we didn't get everything we wanted, but they listened, and they took a second look, and they looked at things and solved some things that, that the previous study had left unresolved. And so I would encourage you to, to look for and see if you can't find the funding to fully implement this study. You know, according to whatever schedule you can with the money that's available, and in any way you can, you know, that you can, you can take care of our employees. Appreciate your time, Commissioner.
Richard Nelson, Public Works. Just want to echo what the others have said. First of all, thank you for considering this. I think it's a good thing to, to look at for the employees. I also want to thank Rob and Lena and Merritt for the work they've done. They have done a lot of work on this, and they have, in my, in my view, have taken what was a problematic study with the McGrath study that we didn't know a lot about and didn't have a lot of detail on. They, they brought us in and helped us understand that and, and got the input they needed from the departments. I think that's been important, and I think that's been very helpful in, in where we're at. As has been mentioned with the, you know, trying to recruit and retain employees, that's always a hard thing, at least in the public works side of the world. We're competing a lot of times with the construction and development side, and with a booming economy, that's, that's hard to compete with. And this study does not comparatively just to that industry, but that's who we're competing with on, on our side of the world. So we're trying to recruit and keep people there as well. I do think that as a county as a whole, I think we have one of the best workforces out there. We have good people across the board. They do a lot of work. They do a lot of work that is above and beyond what would be considered in the same role in other counties. So I think that we have a, a good workforce that way. I would also just encourage you to look at, at implementation on this from a countywide perspective, making sure that all the employees are taken care of to the best degree possible and within the constraints of the budget that you have. Thanks.
Hi, good morning. Rebecca Martel, Children's Justice Center. I just wanted to get up here and say that I really appreciate being a part of the process of looking at this market study. And in behalf of my department, I am in full support of the full implementation of the HR's plan that they came up with and the committee's plan. We really have a highly specialized workforce here in Utah County, not only in my department, but in other departments. And we really can't afford to lose those employees. So, thank you.
Jeff Smith, Recorder. Oh, sorry, I had a breath. I had a hike this week that killed me. But anyway, we wanted to thank you guys for helping us with this implementation and the salary study. Lena, Merritt, and Rob have been great to work with. We've been able to discuss the variables and make sure that everybody was equitable. The A and C account, like, like what Chris was saying, we're covered. And so we hope that you'll implement it with the countywide, so that we can implement it with our staff, too, because we're kind of dependent on that, so everybody gets the same thing. But as soon as possible, I think the morale in our office is they're looking what's going to happen. And they're looking at something to happen, you know, quickly. So I think if we get this done quick, it'll be great. So it'll be easier to retain. And we've had a hard time keeping stuff, like everybody says, I echo that. We've had to go out a number of times to try to get a qualified individual for certain positions, and it's just we're kicking the can so far. We're just grasping right now to get people here. I think if we can get this done, it'll be a great thing. So we want to thank you for what you've done and continue to do what we're doing. So, thank you.
Gary Ratcliffe, Surveyor. I have the county's largest department. When I lose an employee, it's, it's like Sheriff's Officer, Health Department, losing 50. So I've, I've got a job right now that I've, a position I've lost. Went to a fourth-class county. Great employee. And we worked hard to get that position. It was an extra position that we worked hard to acquire. You granted us that position. It was, it was a great move, and we're, we're struggling filling that. So I, I think this job study thing, anything you can do to help would be very beneficial for morale across the board. Appreciate the efforts of, that Lena and her group has made. Appreciate your consideration of what's been said here. Thanks.
Mike Brower, Sheriff's Office. Sheriff couldn't be here today, but I'll echo everything that's been said by the department heads. I think it's time that we, we implement this and figure out where to come up with money to take care of, take care of these employees who are, and are, and everybody else is spread thin. We're adding more responsibilities on these employees, and, and it's taking a toll on them. So we're in favor of implementation.
Scott Finch with the Utah County Attorney's Office, Bureau of Investigations. I, like everyone else is, I would encourage you to implement this study in its full. And we're losing good people. We just recently lost a young investigator from our office to a city. He lost rank. He's going to go back to working shift work and back doing just regular patrol officer type of things, because he cannot make, could not make ends meet, as far as him and his family. And I think that's, he gave up rank. He was a sergeant. Now he's going back to as a patrol officer. I think that was one of the problems he, discussing with him why he's leaving is he says, even though I'm making X amount here, I can go to this city and make more money because of the benefit package and also the salary. It's just not matching up. So I guess the bottom line is, I would encourage you to really take a good look at it, and thank you for looking and being willing to help us out. Thanks.
Neil Peterson, IT Director. I think you sense complete agreement with everyone that was on the committee. That wasn't the case when the committee started. There was a lot of lively discussions that went back and forth about how to correctly implement this. And I think the recommendation that you will receive takes the best parts out of the McGrath study and adds to that auditing and, and corrections where they're necessary. And I think overall, and I think what you see now is agreement from all the department heads that it's, it's, it's not perfect, but it is, it's, it's in a position where it, it probably does the best for the most number of people. Thank you.
We'll technically close the work session.
Is that public comment, do you?
Yeah, I felt pretty public commenting, but I understood we would get there one way or another, so I was fine with it. We would now open for public comment before we move into our closed sessions.
Before Andrew comes up. Obviously, a lot of people know about this work, I mean, about this study, and we don't. We haven't seen it yet. So we're still, you got to give us the same amount of time to work through it, that probably you've, you've worked through. It's not something that we just jump right at and say, done deal. Because it seems like everyone knows about it and wants us to fully implement something that we haven't even seen yet. Just, just kind of a comment there for it.
All right. Go for it, Andrew.
Excuse me. I'm Andrew Jackson. Didn't get it the first time. I'm Andrew Jackson, Executive Director, Mountain Land Association, the government. Last week, I was selected by the members of COG acting as the Utah Transit Authority, Utah County or Mountain Land Area Selection Committee to be the replacement for Sherri Hall Everett on the Board of Trustees. And it requires a, I believe it's a consent agreement by the Utah County Commission. I was hoping to be on the agenda today, but it's, it's not. But the original copy is with Chris in the attorney's office. I gave it to her on Friday, so hopefully we can. I just walked in and whoever was at the little glass shelter thing that.
Chris Ellsworth, okay, yes.
Yeah, so the.
I was thinking attorney.
The County Commission's door was closed, and so I just went, that was the next door over, and I just gave it to her. So it's the original copy of the Merritt's signatures for that. But I will not be available for the next two weeks. So if you're going to act on this in the next two weeks, I just wanted to make a couple of comments so you can bring that back up on the record. So this position is just an interim position to fulfill Sherri Hall Everett's position, and it will terminate on or before November 1st of 2019. I have no desire whatsoever to be one of the three.
2018.
2018, yes, sorry. I have no desire to be one of the three trustee members, so I'm just filling that interim position. There's four things that I would work towards. One is a service level agreement sooner than later with the county commission on the level of service that UTA is providing within the county area. The second is prior to any spending of sales tax dollars late to 59, 12, 22, 18, whether that's on a county level or a city level, that there be a requirement, that there be a memorandum of understanding with UTA and how those funds would be spent. And move forward on past program. We've been working on a trial basis with Randy Edwards, with the veterans. We were approached by the LDS Church through MAG. And then I know Spring is also working with a group of people to get some passes there. How it's interpreted by UTA, it's not within the prescribed way that we're doing it, but it works, and the way that they want to do it doesn't, people don't fit in that box. So we've got a way that we can do it, and so we're trying to do maybe off-label, a pilot program for that. And then last but not least is the implementation of SB 136. I spent a year working with legislators on SB 136 and knowing kind of the background of what they were trying to attempt. And so I just want to make sure that this is good transition to go towards that three-member board of trustees, and we can get things lined up, so there's not things where there's rumors of costs of bus decal changes that then go off in a random direction, thrown out as red herring, but actually in a way that we can move towards that implementation of SB 136, so the new trustees can take, take off from there. So I didn't know if you had any questions. Obviously, this is not an action item, but since I won't be available the next two weeks, I just wanted to present myself here if you did.
The other one that I just wanted to throw at you, too, is we used to have a bus stop down at the jail. I know Mary's been looking at that to see what the viability of that is as well. I know Mary's been looking at that to see what the viability of that is as well. And, and then you, you kind of covered some of the topics there with uh, um, passes as they come out. Part of the, part of the struggle we're having with inmates as they be, as they come out of that program is that they don't have the transportation, then all of a sudden they miss something, next thing you know, they violated their parole on their back end and, and so we're trying to help to cover, to see, see what we can do to help with alleviating minor issues that, that um, then turn into create larger issues.
Yeah, and we just had a meeting, some MAG staff just had a meeting last week with the LDS Church and they have some funding associated with that. So they've got some funding for the program and we have the pass program that um, they can get the passes through the LDS, through Provo City. Um, but the way that it's done right now, um, it's a full charge fare
Yeah.
by way that UTA contract is, although UTA allows for a reduced fare for people who are homeless or have the potential to be homeless. And so we're trying to work on a pilot program. We can say these people are either homeless or have a potential to be homeless and we want a reduced fare for that. And so that's what we're, we're trying to do.
Currently, it's like two hundred dollars or whatever the case may be with it, right?
Um, yeah, for, for a month pass and, and the problem with it is also that in some instances um, say at the agent bishop may provide a, a month pass at a hundred and eighty dollars or something. And that pass gets lost. There's no rate to replace that pass. There's a hundred and eighty dollars, it's just gone. So we have a tap-on, tap-off, pay-as-you-go and we can, if someone isn't meeting their requirements, we can deactivate that pass. And so one of the things I want to do is make sure that we can do that for this program so that they can keep track of that and it's not just a hundred and eighty dollars, it's just lost and the same thing happens with tokens.
Right.
Okay. Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
Alright, any additional public comment? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move to our closed meetings and thank you for your attendance today.